Good evening, everyone. Like to call our Monday, April 26 Fayetteville City Council Meeting to Order. Thank you all who are joining us virtually. At this time, we'll have the invocation. Sent up timber in awhile. Did you do it like? I think he just prayed. So Councilman Minister Pastor Davis, would you mind giving us a prayer? Alright, Counselor, if we can stand for the prayer, following which we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for giving us life, health, strength, knowledge, wisdom, and with that, understanding. God, we ask in this moment that you would bring us one to another in unity for the city, for the work of these people. God, our hearts and our minds, that we might do what's best. God, we thank you for everything you're doing in this world. Continue to work in our favor. We send prayers out to those in authority and those who are doing work for other people, God, right now and across this nation. We pray that you would show yourself mildly before us, for we need you right now, and even begin so by doing it tonight in this meeting. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Councilman Davis. Item 4.0 is the announcements. We have Mr. Scott Bullitt. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Council, and all the citizens we serve. Well, like everyone on the dais there, I heard the excitement last week, straight from the Governor, that maybe five weeks from where we stand right now, there might be some real extravagant loosening up and returning, I guess, to some sort of normalcy as we remember it. I would caution though, there's a lot of things that are gonna have to happen, a lot of things are gonna have to fall into place. The metrics are something that Public Health's been talking about for the better part here of a year, and we're at day 407 today under our state of emergency. And I don't need to repeat the metrics. I think we're all familiar with that. We're seeing some numbers bump and kinda sag up and down, kinda in a wave-like fashion. But ultimately, what the Governor dropped for us last week was a two-thirds of the adult population being vaccinated. So it's 66.7. Today, we're at 48.2. So 18 and a half percent, if you will, is what we've got to do in five weeks. Here locally, we've done 18.3 in over three months. So we've got a time span issue here. I trust the folks in Raleigh that they know what they're talking about, but we'll see where we're at as we go along. I think what that begs of all of us is we really have to push vaccinations. That's how we get to the end of the line here and win the prize that we want. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine and some of the hesitancy around it has probably hurt matters, because we were set for a lot of that to be administered in our community. Not only out of convenience, because it didn't have to be refrigerated as some of the others, but the beauty of it was it was one shot and done. That pause has been lifted, so you'll see places start to administer that again. I know Fayetteville State's doing the Moderna right now. Around the clock, I think their short day is Thursdays, I believe, but every other day, they're running a full schedule. They're still giving stuff at the Crown, still giving stuff at the hospital, and if you go to the website, there are places all over town. So there's no shortage, it's open to everybody, but we've got to really push people to get it. And that's the narrows of it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Ingram and then Kinston. You said, oh, okay. Councilmember Kinston, you had a question in reference to this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So I do have one question about the 16-year-olds getting their vaccination. One of the comments that I think was made, that they're not getting the Moderna, they're getting Pfizer, and the difficulty of being able to find the locations just for the 16-year-olds. Do you have any information on that for those that may be listening that are wanting to get their 16-year-olds vaccinated?
No, I feel certain sometimes that there's some problems with advertising. Sometimes it's not always clear what the current shot is being given at said location. I don't often see in my office the luxury of knowing, like we do with Fayetteville State right now, that it's gonna be Moderna. But one of the fixes for that, a workaround, if you will, that's supposed to be coming, is the private providers. In this case, pediatricians who might still be seeing those older adolescents, and then they become young adults, should have access to shots as well to give. We'll work with you on trying to find an answer to that, but I still, the Health Department points me back to the website about find your shot, or take your shot. And we'll get that put out again. And if you, if all of you would push it on your social media as well. Some days, even the supply still has an impact on not knowing what brand it's gonna be. And we're just handcuffed to that, because I know one brand allows the 16-year-olds, others set at 18.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Bullitt, we appreciate it. Hopefully, when you return, it'll be some news about opening up and back to normal, hopefully.
Fingers crossed. We gotta get people to get the shot.
Gotta get the shot, you all, so we can get back to life. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item 5.0, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I briefly wanted to give a quick thanks to everyone who participated in the citywide cleanup that was held. Also, wanted to highlight, as we recently just celebrated Earth Day, wanted to highlight Sustainable Sandhills and the work that they do within the city and counties. And if those are interested in continuing the work to help beautify Fayetteville and keep our city, or make our city sustainable, I would highly recommend volunteering with Sustainable Sandhills. There is an initiative right now that the city, the county, Cumberland County, and Sustainable Sandhills are partnering with, that Councilmember Dawkins loves, which is the Five for Friday, where you pick up five pieces of trash, and you know, you just go out and pick it up, and that helps you do your part in keeping this city clean. Thank you, Mayor.
You. Alright, item 5.0, City Manager Report. Okay. Item 6.0, approval of the agenda. Alright, Counsel. We have a motion by Councilmember Wright to approve the agenda. It's the second by Councilman Davis, and Counsel will try to utilize lights. Madam Deputy Clerk, who are we joined by remotely? Who's on the phone? Okay, alright. Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes on approval. Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
Alright. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. I guess I better vote. Alright, got me. Alright, item 7.0 is the consent. Counsel, I'll look to you for action on that. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to start by pulling... Councilmember Dawkins, are you still interested in pulling seven? Okay, item 7.03 and item 7.09 from the consent agai... I'm sorry, two? Okay. I would like to pull item 7.09 from the consent agenda for discussion and vote.
Okay, Councilman Herr, were you voting or you had an item? Okay, so Councilmember Ingram, there's a motion to approve with the exception of item 7.09, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so alright. Counsel has a motion, is there a second? Is that your second? Alright, the second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, Counsel, I'll look to you for action. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull item 8.01 for an up and down vote.
That's in the legislative section, which will come to us anyway. We're under consent right now. Did you see something under the seven-point items?
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Thank you.
Okay, alright. Alright, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes to approve consent with the exception of 7.09. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Right. Madam Clerk, that motion carries nine to one. Those voting in opposition, Councilmember Dawkins. Item 7.09, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really didn't have a true need to pull it, but I did want to pull it for official reading, so that also the council could vote on it. I guess, and I'd have no problem with reading, the resolution that supports the Crown Act. And it, as it reads, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Fayetteville to support the update of the city's equal employment opportunity statement to include natural hair and hairstyles. Whereas through the history of the United States, society has used hair texture, hair type, and protective styles in conjunction with skin color to classify people on the basis of race. And whereas racial discrimination can and does occur because of longstanding racial bias biases and stereotypes associated with hair texture, hair type, and protective hairstyles. And whereas racial discrimination is reflected in workplace policies and practices that bar natural hair protection hairstyles commonly worn by people of African descent, as well as people of Jewish, Latino, and Native American descent. And whereas, a comprehensive EEO statement should address the systematic deprivation of educational employment and other opportunities on the basis of hair texture, hair type, and protective hairstyles that are commonly associated with race unless possesses occupational risk. And whereas, it is necessary to prevent educational employment and other decisions, practices, and policies generated by or reflecting negative biases and stereotypes related to race." And I just wanna thank city staff for making this happen. I'm sorry, I forgot another part. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so I read the official part. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, that the City of Fayetteville proudly supports the inclusion of natural hair and hairstyles in the City of Fayetteville's equal opportunity statement adopted this 26th day of April, 2021, by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville. I wanna thank city staff for bringing this back to us so soon, and I also wanna thank the council ladies that supported this. And I also want to thank Senator Natalie Murdock and her colleagues for heading this up at the state level, and Representative Alma Adams for also heading this up as well. Thank you so much. And Mayor Colvin, if there's no discussion on it, I'd like to call for the vote.
I think I have a question. I'll come right back to you. Councilman Dawkins, you had a question?
I've got lots of questions, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, who do you have? Very good, thank you. Jared, do you believe the City of Fayetteville discriminates on the basis of hairstyles?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. I don't think we discriminate on the basis of hairstyles either. This act is concerning. I just, I want the public to know, this act, is it a true statement to say this act does not affect private business in any way?
That's correct. This is just for the City of Fayetteville employees.
Alright, and do we have any food service employees working in the City of Fayetteville that you're aware? I know, how long you been here? Six months? You've probably been here a year, I don't even know it, but six months?
About seven months, yes.
Or seven months. In your opinion, do we have any food service employees?
Not that I'm aware of.
Very good. The reason that's very important is I've discussed this with clients who are food service employers, and this would not work in their system. Alright, firing police personnel. How could this possibly affect, or describe, based on this act, what our police or our fire personnel have to do if they want, and I have no problem if they've got hair down to their waist, as long as it doesn't affect their job performance. So explain how this act may impact those employees.
That's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up, and that's the reason why we put that little clause in the resolution about unless it poses occupational risk. So our, with the fire department, if hair is sticking out from the helmet, there's a risk of catching on fire if they enter a burning structure. And in addition to that, in rescue operations, there's a lot of equipment that they use that could have a risk of entanglement if hair is sticking out of the helmet. So that's why we put that clause in there. Their policy does say that, you know, braids and locks and things like that are okay, as long as it's not below the ear. And same with the police as well. The police, you know, if hair is sticking out of, from under their cap, that can be used in a fight to pull on it and that sort of thing, and pose a possible threat. At times, they may have to wear a gas mask for tear gas and things like that. And they also have riot helmets that they have to wear, and you know, it has to fit snugly over the head. So that's why that clause is in there.
Alright, and last question. Are you comfortable with the way this is worded? In effect, your office reviewed this, and you're comfortable?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Jared.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that the council adopt the, adopt and approve the resolution of the EEO statement.
Alright, there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Kinston, I think. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, Counsel, you had a discussion? Okay, alright, Counsel, look to you for your votes. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Alright, Madam Clerk, motion carries. Item 8.01, Legislative Hearings, Planned Neighborhood Development. Mr. Harmon?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Mr. Harmon?
Okay, sorry for that delay. The first case we have before you tonight is PND 21-002. This is property located at the intersection of Georgetown Circle, Bahama Loop, and Offering Drive. The owner, Mr. St. Pierre, is looking to revise the approved Planned Neighborhood Development Plan for there to add, there's two lots, and they're looking to add two duplexes on each lot. Just to give you an idea of where the property is located, this is in the Lake Shores subdivision. This is kind of the tail end, more of the tail ends of McFadden Lake here. And these are the two properties in question. Currently, it is that neighborhood is a PND or Planned Neighborhood Development. And in order to do something other than what was originally approved in that, they had to come back through for revision. Originally, and you'll see this in a moment, these properties were slated to be commercial, and that's what they currently are allowed for. This is the original site plan that was submitted and went before the zoning commission. I'm not gonna spend but a second on this, because we have an updated site plan that I got from the developer today, actually about quarter till five, that actually shows how their parking and stuff will be located here. So this is the updated site plan. Unlike the other one, it's in two pieces here. So we had to kinda look at them separately. The units themselves are still sitting the same place that they set before. This right here is the 100-year floodplain line. These are the units on Lot 1. They would have, it would be two duplexes. They would share a common entrance drive, and then they would split with parking three spaces for each unit. And then the Lot 2, very similar. Again, the location of the duplexes hasn't changed, but this does show you here on Georgetown Circle how they'd have one common entrance and split into the two different unit, two different four-unit configurations with their parking setup as well. So this is what the property currently looks like. It is undeveloped, it is wooded. It, this portion here is quite a bit higher than the portion that is back down at the lake. It does drop off quite a bit, and that's why you've got the 100-year floodline in there. These are some of the surrounding properties. This property is just across the street from, to the west. These are townhomes. The PND was revised for these a number of years ago. Originally, these were slated, this property was slated to be a commercial property as well. And then you can see kind of single family for the most part around this, but the neighborhood itself has quite a bit of different types of multifamily located in it, as is required with a planned neighborhood development. This right here is the original PND approval part of it. This goes back to the mid 80s. Originally, this, and this is the, this is the property that now has those townhomes I just showed you. They're located here. These are the two properties in question. They've been reconfigured over the years. So it's still two properties, but the property line is a little different now. But they're originally slated for CP, which is commercial with a plan. That's our old zoning ordinance terminology there. Like I said, this goes back to the mid 80s. And then in 2007, I believe it was, they were approved for 14 units apartments here on these two properties. This is the layout of what they had at that time. They did not move forward with that approval. Nothing was ever done on the property. And so after a year, the planning director at that time, Jimmy Teal, sent them a letter saying that that plan was no longer valid, and that it reverted back to the original, which was the commercial, which is what we are at presently. The Planning Commission and our professional planning staff have recommended approval based on the congruency of the proposed revision. The proposed amendment, we feel, would result in logical and orderly development pattern. The proposal would develop two lots with two duplexes on each, eight units total, while keeping the minimum required open space for the PND development. The revision is consistent with 2030 land use plan, which calls for low-density residential designation, mainly consists of single-family residential, some accessory dwellings, and occasional duplexes and/or townhomes. Under this revision, these lots would be developed at a lower density than the approved PND revision in 2007, which would have allowed 14 lots. And like I said, currently, it's still under the original plan, which would allow for commercial activity on the property. That concludes staff's presentation at the moment. If you would hold your questions for staff until after you conclude the public hearing, we'd appreciate that.
Thanks, sir. Alright, with that. Alright, the public hearing, individual designed to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00. Before 7:00 this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is chosen or designated. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When 30 seconds arrives, you will hear a buzzer. Uh, when thirty seconds arrives, you, you will hear a buzzer. And at the end of your lot of time, the timer will ring. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, Mayor, we have seven speakers for this one item. The first speaker is Ms. Whitney Saracusus.
Ms. Saracusus, are you there?
Yes, uh, yes, sir. Um, I'm Whitney Saracusus. I live at forty-six fifteen Dunk Castle Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Um, I am for this project because this home has been, this land has been vacant for quite a while and the owner has attempted multiple times since twenty thirteen to actually sell the land. But no one has ever expressed interest in buying the land or doing anything else with the land. So the owner now has the opportunity to build on the land they own. And they pay taxes and the HOA to the, um, lake there. So I believe that they should be able to do it and it would actually benefit Fayetteville a lot more, especially with the increase of, um, soldiers coming in due to everything opening up. And also, um, with people coming from the north, a lot of them are now moving due to high taxes into our area. So, um, renting would be, it would be helpful for renting, um, and for people to live in. So I think this would be a great idea and would definitely help Fayetteville immensely.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call your next speaker.
Yes, Mayor, our next speaker is Mong Saint Pierre.
Hello?
Hello, this is, uh, Frank Devine with Mong Saint Pierre. Uh, we are actually the managing members of, uh, Mong and Ron Enterprises Three LLC. Uh, we currently reside at twenty-six oh five Delcrest Drive in Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-one-seven. Do you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Um, we bought that property, actually, my wife bought the property with her husband at the time, uh, back in, uh, two thousand nine. Uh, they paid a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for it. Uh, and since that time, unfortunately, he had passed away. And, uh, after that, she decided, well, instead of trying to develop it, like we said, it was originally gonna be an apartment complex. Instead of trying to, uh, continue with that, she put it up for sale. Uh, she tried to get her original price. It, it didn't go. Uh, she kept lowering it and lowering it and lowering it. Uh, finally, uh, we, we put it up for sale for fifty thousand dollars a lot, because we split it up into two lots and we still got no buyers. Yeah, we, uh, talked to, uh, some of the real estate people. They said, well, if you build on those lots, uh, and then you can probably make a sale, because people will be ready, ready to buy that stuff. We, uh, talked to the, uh, realtors and they said probably the, the hottest items right now are gonna be the duplexes. They, they sell relatively quickly as opposed to, uh, the single-family dwellings, which is why we've kind of gone in that direction. Uh, if somebody talks about, okay, it's gonna be near the floodlines and stuff like that, we're, we're planning to build it outside of those floodlines. There's, uh, and I, I have talked to, uh, uh, insurance companies. They, they said even if it gets into the floodline, yes, the rates will go up, uh, depending on how much, uh, is actually, uh, subject to damages, et cetera. Um, all righty, the, uh, uh, taxes, well, we're, we're paying taxes on that every year. It comes into about a thousand dollars a year. So I wanna come right down and we're over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars probably invested into that property between the taxes and, uh, the, uh, HOAs. Uh, I did talk to, uh, the Corps of Engineers. Uh, they, uh, wanted to ask them about some of the, uh, the wetlands in there. Uh, they really didn't seem to have a problem as long as we stayed away from that, that drainage ditch that they've got in that general area. And, and that pretty much sums up. I, obviously, I'm for it. Otherwise, we wouldn't be proposing. So if any questions, we'll, uh, conclude that.
Thank you, sir. We'll, uh, we'll let the speakers speak and then we'll, we'll address questions at a time, but thank you. So, uh, was that for, uh, Mr. Saint Pierre and Mr. Devine, since they were together?
I think the same person has been listed twice.
Okay. Uh, all right, Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Bob Duran.
Mr. Duran, are you there? Mr. Duran, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I coming? Great. Uh, my name's Bob Duran. Uh, I, uh, reside at twelve-twenty-seven Birchmere Way, Fayetteville, North Carolina, two-eight-three-one-two. I am pro this development. First, I, I'd like to say that, uh, Fayetteville is in a housing shortfall. Uh, single-family houses, multifamily houses are in short supply. Uh, they spend, uh, a, a mere minutes on the market before they are sold. Uh, not that that's the only reason why we need to continue building, but, but, but this fits into the development plan of Fayetteville. It, it gives you, uh, a, a little higher density than single-family. Um, we, we were part of this, uh, forum, uh, at the, at the earlier planning committee and we listened to all of the concerns, um, from, from everybody, uh, that, that spoke. Uh, we know we're gonna be making a very modern, upscale duplex at each one of these, uh, locations, right? It, it, it will be a benefit for the community, for the tax value, for the appraised value of anybody in that, in that neighborhood. Uh, we, we do know that we use all the modern building techniques. We, we will ensure that, that, uh, silbarriers are used to control any, any construction debris. We, we also have taken into account, which you've seen, uh, from the city planner, uh, the new plots that, that, that incorporated a new driveway design will greatly minimize any parking on the street, because there won't be any need for it, right? Because there's plenty of parking at each one of those duplexes uh, in order to, to take care of, of a multitude of, of cars, more, more than what's gonna be out there. So, I, I'm, I feel confident. We've, we've addressed all the concerns. This fits inside the plan. Uh, uh, the, the Fayetteville City is, has, has listed before. Uh, the footprint is greatly reduced from what was previously planned. I really don't think that this is a, a, a hard decision for anyone to make. And again, um, I, I believe this is a win, win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Daniel Wright.
Mr. Wright, are you there, sir?
Yes, sir. Could you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, this is Daniel Wright. I currently reside at forty-nine sixty Rockfish Road, Rayford, North Carolina. And I'm, I'm for this project as well. And I, I'm the builder. And, you know, we've, we've tried our best to get everything in that everybody's asked for. You know, we, we really beefed up these driveways. I know we had a lot of people ask questions whether or not there'd be room to park the cars. And I think we've got it set up now where there's over sixteen-hundred-footed driveway per unit. So you, or well, for, per building. And you got enough room to park three cars in a driveway plus one in the garage. You, you roughly have room for four cars per unit. So I noted in this neighborhood, a lot of people try, park on the side of the street, but there should be no need for it with these units, the way we have the driveway set up. And I know there was a little bit of question about the hundred-year flood zone. We've tried to make sure, I know we're close to the flood zone, but we're gonna keep our buildings out of that flood zone area. And, and like Mr. Duran said, we'll use silt fence. We'll close off everything during the construction phase. We'll have the property completely sealed off from the wetland areas. And then, once we're done, once the project's completed, we'll use vegetation, whether it be grass or bushes or maybe small trees, to keep that sediment and to keep everything out of that wetlands and keep it as pristine as it is before we started. And I think that a lot of everything that I had wrote down here to speak on, everybody's already covered and I don't wanna keep taking everybody's time up by just repeating the same thing over and over. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. James Ed Blanchard.
Blanchard, are you there?
Yes, sir. Thank you, counsel. Can you hear me, counsel?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time, counsel. Ed Blanchard Junior, fifty-four forty-four Summer Duck Road, Fayetteville, two-eight-three-one-four. Thank you for your time. I'm president of McFadden Lake Association. We brought this parcel up for protective rezoning to conservation in two thousand and eight. At that time, city staff recommended conservation zoning in the one hundred year floodplain. Now, we've heard from the builder, the owner, the developer, all the folks, the realtor, that do not live in this community uh, about how important it is to, to build eight units in what's primarily a single-family, um, neighborhood. So I want, I want us to look back as a community, and I appreciate, uh, us remembering the stormwater issues we're facing. The Hurricane Matthew event that washed out the Offering Drive Bridge dumped acres and acres of seven-foot-deep sediment right in front of the site. So as elected officials, I know that you will do the right thing and be good stewards of our land, our water, our tax dollars. And I speak for about four hundred members of McFadden Lake Association. S- stormwater is collected at three entries of McFadden Lake for thirty-six square miles from the city of Fayetteville. So as councilpersons, I know you're familiar with storm retention, stormwater retention ponds. McFadden Lake is literally a one hundred and thirty-five-acre stormwater retention pond. We support smart, protective, environmentally sensitive development. And frankly, counsel, and everyone involved, this is not a good fit for leftover land that has not been developed for a reason, ladies and gentlemen. The builders recognized when they built the entire neighborhood, this was practically wastelands. And that's the reason it's still vacant. That's why it hasn't sold. That's why floodwaters continue to, uh, travel up forty, fifty, and sixty feet during small rain events. So I beg counsel to at least postpone this as we wait an environmental study from Carter Environmental. We are also waiting for some more correspondence from the Army Corps of Engineers, who said plainly in letters we provided that a smaller development would be proper. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Our final speaker is Ms. Cheryl Watkins.
Okay, Ms. Watkins, are you there?
Yes, hi, thank you. This is Cheryl Watkins. Um, thank you, counsel. Uh, I reside at fifty-four forty-four Summer Duck Road in Fayetteville. I just wanted to speak on the fact that, um, there's an ongoing flooding issues to be considered, you know, in the lake in general. Um, I live nowhere near the project. Um, you know, the sightliness or unsightliness or any of that doesn't affect where I live, but I do know that there's issues on the lake. Um, it's already an area that is heavily burdened with runoff from the mall area, where, uh, development was concentrated prior to modern zoning flooding ordinances. As you all know, um, no retention ponds, et cetera, were put in place at that time. And all that water, you know, is, um, comes off of the, uh, all the building and comes up into our lake and we have serious, uh, flooding problems. Um, as Mr. Blanchard mentioned, there's, uh, we take on from a thirty-six-square-mile area into this lake and we have no problem with, you know, I'm sure that all the homeowners would say that we have no problem with, uh, building on those properties. They own the land, but that, you know, it should be considered, you know, what kind of building ends up there. Um, prior to living on the lake, I didn't understand what runoff or flooding issues were or why it should be considered today prior to any more long-term damage to the properties, the homeowner's properties, and of course, the privately owned and managed dam. Um, the type of construction being proposed is more than any lot on a lake with flooding issues already should have imposed upon it. And then, of course, um, I wanted to say that, you know, with all due respect, um, you know, I, I feel like if somebody has knowledge about flooding in our area, uh, that, that they would not let it be multifamily here at all. Um, I'll say that, uh, I hope you consider this prior to making any decisions on this property tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right, so with that, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, have a question by Councilmember Kinston. And then Banks McGlaughlin, who has his motion, right?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I would like to make a motion.
Well, uh, let me, let me circle to these questions real quick, councilmember. I'm sorry. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, did you have a question?
Well, I mean, I, well, she's making a motion, but I did just wanna mention that, um, I am in support of, um, building subdivisions, the multi-units within our city. However, I would think that it'd be very premature for us to, um, vote in support of, uh, allowing them to be where we are aware of, uh, that location being a flooding, a flooding area. Um, even when it rains on a regular normal day, uh, they experience, um, flooding. So I think that it'd be really premature for the council to vote and support, um, this item, um, that's been brought before us. Thank you, mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Davis, you had a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, within the packet, I noticed the planning zone, the planning commission, and professional standing pla, plan, professional standing, planning staff, excuse me, recommended approval based on congruency with the proposed, uh, uh, revision. I'd like them to come up and speak to some of the concerns, um, because we know, um, as has been highlighted, the city hall is in a flood, in a flood zone. So I'd like to have them come address, um, um, address their support for this and, thank you.
And this also may be a question that you would wanna ask the applicants as well, um, how they plan to deal with that. But again, as they pointed out and we pointed out, they are building outside of the hundred-year floodplain or flood zone. Um...
So Harmon, there's, uh, there's some, some discussion amongst council. I, I know that, uh, previous to the meeting, in the dinner meeting, Councilmember Kinston said that there was some information that was very pertinent to, that the council would need to hear. It was reiterated by one of the speakers tonight. So counsel, I'll, I'll ask, uh, i- is it necessary for us to, uh, to dive into this, uh, and not honor the request? Or can we make a decision on her request? Because she had her light on initially. She wanted to make the request. But I think if we go down the road of questions, they'll lead to more questions and that kind of defeats the purpose of what her request was, to make sure we had all the information, so.
I'm in favor of honoring her request, Mayor.
So, so, uh, if, if you, are you okay with that, sir? I know you had the floor, um, for a question.
Um, I'm okay with it as long as we can nail down a time.
Yeah, yeah, I think they were waiting on.
The Corps of Engineers is a one-year.
Yeah, was it, was it, was it a report from the Corps of Engineers that you were waiting on, ma'am? Uh, Councilmember Kinston?
No, sir. They were also waiting on an environmental study, sir. So my request is to postpone the decision until our May twenty-fourth meeting to allow them to gather additional information that they're asking time to do.
And a motion?
Hold on, Councilmember Kinston. Uh, Ingram, so, uh, council, if you could, because I, I was, um, trying to hit everybody that was recognized, but I know that was a request. So it, it's before us, uh, we can dispose of it one way or another. If there's not support, uh, to do it, then I'll, I'll come back to Councilman Davis and, and, uh, Dawkins and the others who have their light on. So I see who it is. We, we have your names written. So, um, Councilmember Kinston, uh, can you put that in the form of a motion, please?
Yes, Mayor. So I would like to make a motion for eight point zero one P and D twenty-one zero zero two to delay or postpone the decision until the May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one meeting to allow the homeowners association the opportunity to receive the environmental study that they have asked to, um, have time to review.
All right, is the motion on the floor by Councilmember Kinston has stated, there's a second by Councilmember Ingram? Uh, any discussion on that motion to table until May the twenty-fourth?
I have a, I have a question. What happens on May twenty-fourth when they, when they haven't, when they haven't received it?
Uh, well, it, it comes back to council, so it's whatever council's, uh, pleasure is on it. Um, Madam Clerk, I, I mean, attorney, I see you nodding. That's, that's proper, right? Yeah, it'll, it'll be right back before us, gentlemen, uh, ladies and gentlemen, to do whatever it is we, uh, we will do, council will do. I think that would have been a reasonable amount of time, uh, May twenty-fourth. So it's, it's a, it's a motion. If it, if it passes, then we... If it passes, then we will move forward. If not, I'll come back to you for questions. I have your names written. Discussion question, Councilmember Wright?
Yeah, discussion on the motion. You were saying postpone it for an environmental study, and I agree with that. But my question would be, there has been some questions about a flood zone, and I think our presenters talked about something of that nature. This environmental study will cover the flood zone possibilities and what needs to be done to mitigate that, or is that already something that has been taken into consideration?
I think that was Mr. Blanchard that mentioned that, who spoke about that, about them commissioning the study. If he is... then that would be for them. I'm not sure who... the staff understands who they've commissioned to get the study or what the study would involve. But Mr. Blanchard would be probably the best person to ask that question.
Is he here?
He's on the call.
Yes, sir, council, I'm here. Thank you for your time. We've contacted Carter Environmental Services. Our concern is that the 100-year floodplain should be zoned conservation, as was recommended 13 years ago. So we're waiting an environmental study. We also have a case that'll be coming in front of council to rezone the lake area and wetland area in front of these proposed projects. So the short answer is, yes, the environmental study will study the floodplain and the potential adverse effects eight units would cause where the Hoffing Bridge washed out three years ago.
Finally, do you have a timeline on that environmental study, sir?
Thank you, Councilman Wright. We've got a best estimate of 30 to 45 days, which we committed to trying to ramp up in an effort to cooperate with the developer and with council. So it's highly likely that it may not be completed within 30 days, but we understand that if we only have 30 days, you know, we're going to do the best we can do with that.
Thank you, sir. So...
Thank you.
So based upon the motion to bring it back at our next meeting, would that, if it doesn't come back in 30 days, my question would be, then we're right back where we started. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense, and as a request of the homeowners' association, then that is why I'm presenting the motion for us to go ahead and consider the postponing until the May 24th. I do understand that there are some other issues and some other concerns, so that is why the motion is being put forth. Thank you.
All right. You got two or three lights on, so I don't know what you're doing over there. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this could go on for months. The applicant has made their request, and by the way, it's zoned commercial. So, you know, why in the world would they not put a dad gum 7-Eleven there with a gas station? I mean, so we need to approve this thing and vote against this motion on the floor right now, is my guidance, and get more homes built for our citizens in Fayetteville. I just... that's enough. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right. Any... council, we have a motion on the floor. It's been discussed. This is a motion to delay for specific 30 days until May the 26th meeting?
Before.
24th?
Before.
All right. Look to you for action on that. Councilmember Banks-McGofflin?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk. Motion carries eight to two. Those voting oppose Councilman Davis and Dawkins. We'll see on the 26th... 24th? First Monday in May. Whatever date. Fourth Monday in May. Yes. All right. Item 8.02, text amendment to Article 30. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Proton, City Council, Alicia Moore, Planner Two with Development Services. Okay, so the changes presented tonight are part of that bigger batch of 160D amendments that was recently passed. This particular issue was pulled out so it could go to work session, which was held on March 1st. Staff drafted this amendment based on the preferences expressed by council during that work session, and then the planning commission recommended approval on March 16th. So essentially, the amendment will change the review process for special use permits and subdivision waivers from the current dual board review process to single board review, that board being city council. S U Ps, I know you guys are very familiar with those, subdivision waivers come up very infrequently, so I'll provide a quick explanation to say that subdivisions follow specific and extensive requirements about their design and layout. However, if a developer can show that strict compliance with those requirements would cause them an undue and unique hardship, then the developer can request this waiver to allow for some flexibility. So it's like a variance on a large scale. Both of these applications currently undergo a dual board review process, where first the zoning or planning commission holds a hearing and issues a recommendation to city council, and then city council holds its own evidentiary hearing where the case is presented again and a decision is rendered. So why is that a problem? S U Ps and subdivision waivers are quasi-judicial decisions, meaning that under the law, they must be based upon competent material and substantial evidence. The problem is that advisory board recommendations made by the planning zoning commission, those are not substantial evidence, so city council cannot legally base any part of their decision on it. So since city council can't rely on anything contained in their recommendation, it only does not serve much good, but having it there invites problems. First, everything that was presented during that advisory board review has to be presented all over again to city council, which is inefficient and redundant, but moreover, it increases the opportunity for confusion as to the basis of the decision, as well as the possibility of legal error. Because if city council has been given a recommendation and has it right there, like in front of you, it's pretty hard to not consider it. Having a single board review process would reduce these issues. State law says that these decisions can be made by any of the relevant boards, the zoning commission, planning commission, or city council, so long as it's authorized by the U D O. At the work session, these options were presented to city council, which expressed a preference to continue on as the decision-making board for both of these applications, removing the review and recommendation by the advisory board. By changing the process to the single board review, it increases efficiency by reducing the redundant presentation of information and decreases confusion and opportunities for legal error. Options are adoption of the proposed text amendments, denial, revisions and adoption, remanding them back to staff for further consideration. The staff, as well as the planning commission, recommends adoption of the proposed text amendments, which is option number one. Are there any questions?
See, Councilmember Ingram, has her light?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If there are no questions, I'm prepared for a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the...
Yeah, we have to open and close the public...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I like that enthusiasm. All right. So with that, stick around just in case, all right? With that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
No, we have no speakers for this item.
With that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed amendments that are consistent with all applicable, city-adopted plans. Is that right? Madam Attorney, I didn't get that right. To adopt option one, my apologies, which is adoption of the proposed text amendments. There we go. Thank you.
All right. Is a motion on the floor as stated? Is there a second? There was your second. Second by Councilmember Kinston. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Clearing the board. Council, I'll look to you for votes. Councilmember Banks-McGofflin?
Green.
Councilmember Ingram, vote. Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, it is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 8.03 H R C text amendment. It's Baptiste, how are you?
I'm fine. Good evening. This is TA 21-004. This is a proposed text amendment to Section 30-2.A.7. The Historic Resources Commission, the applicant is the city, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval. On March 1st, 2021, the city council received and accepted the Historic Resources Program Study. The H R C program study was submitted by the consultant, the Hansberry consultant, and it identified both recommended and optional updates to the city's current U D O program. The first change to the recommendation was to change the H R C membership. The consultant examined 31 commissions across the state of North Carolina and only identified five commissions that were larger than ours, which currently has 11 members. On March 2nd, 2021, the Appointment Committee met and recommended that amendment to Section 30-2.8.7, the Historic Resources Commission, subparagraph B, be made to reduce the number of members from 11 to 7, and subparagraph F to modify the number of members for a quorum. On March 16th, 2021, the Planning Commission voted unanimously eight to zero to approve the text amendment. Currently, the code reads, "The Historic Resources Commission shall consist of 11 members appointed by the city council. All members shall reside within the corporate limits of City Fayetteville. The quorum is six members of the Historic Commission shall constitute a quorum, and no official business of the commission shall be conducted without a quorum present." Staff is proposing to change both of these sections to read. "The Historic Commission shall consist of seven members appointed by the city council, and four members of the Historic Resources Commission shall constitute a quorum." City council, by majority vote of a quorum present, shall take one of the following actions based on the text amendment standards section of the code. City council shall either adopt the proposed ordinance amendment, deny the amendment, recommend revision and adoption of all or some of the proposed ordinance amendment, recommend remanding all or some of the proposed ordinance amendments back to staff for further consideration. Planning commission and staff are recommending that the city council approve the proposed amendment based on the congruency of the proposed amendment with the following standards for text amendments. The proposed amendment is consistent... the proposed amendments are consistent with all applicable city-adopted plans, and the proposed amendment does not conflict with any provision of this ordinance. Are there any questions of staff? Thank you.
All right. That, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
No, sir. No speakers for this item.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. I'll look to you for action. Councilman Wright?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt tax amendment to Section 30-2-A7, Historical Resource Commission of the Unified Development Code according to staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. There's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Wright. Is that a second, Councilmember here?
Yes, sir. It is.
Mayor?
Yes.
I had a question for staff.
All right. So we... Didn't see your hand, but we'll see if we can do it. I'm sure Jermaine did the motion. So, yes, ma'am. Ms. Baptiste is at the podium.
My question is, why was it recommended that we decrease the number for that position from 11 to 7?
That was a recommendation that came out of the Appointment Committee. When the study was done, as I stated, there was a survey done, and 31 municipalities of similar size as Fayetteville were analyzed, and we were one of the few municipalities that had such a large body. There were only five commissions out of the 31 that actually had more members than what we had. So I believe that the members of the Appointment Committee felt that in order to streamline, it would be better to have a little smaller board.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kinston? That's what I'm talking about. Okay, Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To do some back history for the boards and commissions, this has been a long process. This hasn't been a process that just started a year ago, two years ago. It started about four or five years ago, going through our committees, and we went out and made sure that we had all the knowledge that we needed to have to make our decision in this committee. So as Ms. Baptiste said, that we, to be in line with our best practices for cities, this is what the committee felt was best, and when the planning commission did it eight to zero, we kind of felt with the information that we got that we made the best choice. So I just wanted to explain that. Thank you.
All right. All right, guys. Thank you. So with that, I see your questions are answered. I clear the board. There's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Wright. There's a second by... Who's it? Councilmember Kinston?
Here.
Here. Councilmember here. We've had discussion, council. I'll look to you for your votes. All right. Councilmember Banks-McGofflin? Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, that is nine to one. I was voting in opposition. Councilmember Banks-McGofflin. Motion carries. Item 9.01, evidentiary hearing.
We now move into the evidentiary hearings. I will read an opening comment on that, and we have two items that will be presented by the applicants with action to be taken by the city council. All individuals wishing to speak, as a witness should have signed up before the start of the meeting, is there anyone wishing to speak that needs to sign up who hasn't? Prior to this, we had one person speaking for each. All right. We now have the swearing or affirming of the participants. Anyone speaking at the hearing must provide competent material, substantial evidence to the city council under oath. Anyone planning on speaking during this evidentiary hearing, please stand and be sworn in by the city clerk to swear or affirm that the testimony you plan to give is true.
Our speakers are Mr. Terry Eason and Mr. James Tolbert. Okay? If you could, please, gentlemen, raise your right hand. If you could please, gentlemen, raise your right hand and do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Mayor Colvin, we'll be turning it over to you. Um, as you look at your items that you see, Roman numeral six, since there's only one speaker, you won't have to be reading that part.
Please proceed with case, with case over to the explanation of specification being addressed by the applicant. On the record, please state your name and address in the list of the case, all of the waitstaff. They changed my phone that up. Really not right. This time this tonight, I believe, you know. Change the name quite good. I think that's the city attorney.
No.
And you just went down by yourself. This is case number P twenty-one fifteen. The applicant and owner of the property is Mr. Terry Easton, doing business as Quality, Towing and Recovery. The request is a special use permit to operate an automotive wrecker service in the community commercial zoning district. The property is currently addressed as four twelve, four sixteen and four twenty-two Blunt Street, as well as four seventy and four seven, seventy-two Williams Street. It's in District Two and staff and the zoning commission have recommended approval. The subject properties are located here in yellow. They're located just to the east of Winslow Street, to the west of Williams Street and the railroad line that runs here. And they are just north of Blunt Street. This property is located approximately a half a mile south of City Hall. As you can see from the zoning map, this whole area is mainly commercial and industrial zone properties. According to the land use map, this area should be used as an industrial or employment center. According to the land use, um, plan, industrial and employment center is defined as high intensity non-residential uses with high impact and a likelihood of nuisance. This, the subject property, Quality, Towing and Recovery, has been in business for approximately twenty years. Thus, it was developed prior to the current zoning ordinance and has never received a special use permit. The request is to bring part, to bring this property partially into conformity with the, with the UDO as well as allow the business to expand. The towing company provides services to Fayetteville, Hope Mills, Spring Lake, Rayford and Fort Brag, the Fort Brag area. The company currently tows two to three cars a week and stores them until the owner picks them up, a salvage yard, salvage yard removes a vehicle or the vehicle is sold. Surrounding properties in the area, to the north, um, is a unidentified storage yard. To the west is Caltech electro, electrocating. And to the south, this is actually a CX railroad, um, yard. And to the east is a commercial building. According to the development standards, um, section thirty dash four point C point K point five Automotive Wrecker Service. Automotive wrecker services uses shall comply with the following. The usage shall be located at least two hundred and fifty feet from any residential district, school or childcare center. Vehicles shall not be stored on site for more than ninety days and vehicles shall be stored to the rear of the principal structure behind a wooden fence or masonry wall. While the item must be treated as a new case, our current ordinance provides for a review and recommendation by the zoning commission. Until the ordinance is amended, removing this two-step process, the re, that recommendation shall be shared. The recommendation is to approve the requested SUP to make an existing automotive wrecker service conform in an area zone, community commercial as presented by staff and based on the information provided above and all attachment. The recommendations do not count as evidence in determining any findings for the aforementioned requests. The decision shall, must be based on evidence presented in the evidentiary hearing in front of the city council. The general consistency statement for an approval shall include the amendment is consistent with approved plans because the city's unified development ordinance support automotive wrecker service in a CC district, as does the twenty forty future land use plan and map. The uses surrounding this property are a mix of commercial uses which are compatible and the, with the proposed special use permit and the proposed special use permit is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed zoning fits the character of the overall area. That is staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And, uh, council will open, uh, public hearing. Now called evidentiary hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, any speakers?
Yes, sir, we just have one. Mr. Terry Easton.
Easton, how are you, sir?
I'm doing pretty good, sir.
How are you? Please state your name and address for us.
My name's Terry Easton. I'm looking, my home address, seven twenty-five Appalachian Drive, on the business at four twenty-two Blunt Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Yeah, I've got eight points here. The special use, uh, complies with all applicable standards of section thirty dash four C U specified standards. According to section thirty dash four, the automotive wrecker design standards, automotive wrecker service use, uses shall comply with the following standards. The U shall be located at least two hundred and fifty feet from any residential district, school or childcare center. In any of these districts it, in which it use may be located, the city council may, through a special use permit, request approval or reduction in the separation requirements upon a showing of good cause with supporting evidence of mitigation and impacts. Vehicles, uh, shall not be stored more than, more than ninety days. Vehicles, uh, shall be stored to the rear of the principal structure behind a wooden or fence or masonry which is coordinates to section thirty dash five D and fencing standards. And number two, the special use compatible with the character of surrounding lands and use permitted in the zoning districts of surrounding lands. The existing use has been in the current location for over twenty years and has not presented, presented any adverse impact on neighborhood. The addition to the site will be used to park employee cars, shore vehicles and equipment. Number three, the special use void significant adverse impact of surrounding lands regarding service delivery, parking, loading, odorous noise, glare and vibration. The current site is an existing and an addition to the site will have to meet the requirements of the UDO. The project will be evaluated by the technical review community at, and other law, local, state and federal agencies as applicable. Number four, the special use is configured and minimizes adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use of the adjacent lands. The project will have fencing and landscaping to provide screening of the site. Number five, the special use avoids significant deterioration of water of and air resources, wildlife habitat, science resources and other natural resources. The site is developed, the additional properties will be used for additional storage. Number six, the special use maintains safe ingress and egress onto the site and safe conditions around the road, around the site. The project will have direct access to Blunt and Williams Street. Number seven, the special use allows for protection of property values and ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses and permitted zoning districts, districts and. The requesting will bring the existing non-conforming use into conformity with the UDO and allow the expansions of the site. The site will have to provide screening as well as fencing to the standard of the UDO. This use is similar to other uses in the area. No documentation has been submitted showing the development will negatively affect property values. And number eight, the special use complies with all other relevant city, state and federal laws and regulations. The application will be required to meet all applicable standards.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we'll, uh, close the public hearing. Uh, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to move to approve the special use permit to allow the operation of, an expansion of automotive wrecker service subject to the conditions identified in and conforming to the current unified development ordinance standards as depicted on the attached site plan present, and as presented by staff based on the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during this hearing. And that application is consistent with the applicable, applicable plans because, one, the development is located in a community commercial zoning district. Two, that is, that this use complies with the findings listed. And three, the proposed permit is in the public interest because the proposed SUP does fit with the character of the area.
All right, thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Ingram. There's a second by Councilmember here. Uh, any, this, yeah, I had clipped, he hit it in the next one, I clipped it. Now we move to discussion phase. Uh, have a question. Uh, Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin?
No, it was a second, no worries.
Okay. Councilmember Wright, you had it? Okay, all right. Counsel, I'll look to you, look to you for your vote. Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Whatell?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Item nine point zero two. Mr. Harmon, you're back.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Next case we have before you is another evidentiary hearing. This is a special use permit request to allow condominium, single-family attached dwellings in a single-family six, uh, SF six zoning district located on Willow Borough Avenue. Uh, just to give you an idea of where this is located, uh, Willow Borough goes out to Rayford Road. You've got Raven Hill, uh, Drive and Executive Place just here to the west and just off the map here to the west, if it were over just a little bit, you'd see the Harris Teeter Shopping Center there. So, it kind of gives you an idea of where we're located. Uh, as you can see, there are condos already in existence beside of this particular property. And we'll see in a moment that this property is vacant and a little more info on it, but, uh, it is currently zoned FS, FS six, uh, like I stated a moment ago. Uh, you've got, uh, commercial over here on Raven Hill and then you've got condos here to the direct north and, and northeast as well. Uh, on our land use plan, uh, this does call for medium density residential. Uh, and these two proposed, uh, units would fit into that, uh, category. Uh, this is a picture of the property as it sits currently. It's completely, uh, clear, uh, has been for some time. You'll see, uh, the condos here to the north. These are similar, uh, to what the applicant is proposing, uh, to build. They're very similar. You'll see that in a moment. Uh, these are, uh, to the south and east, these are homes indicative of the rest of Willow Borough. So, this is a site plan that has been submitted by the applicant. We've got two condo units here, uh, with access here along the edge of the cul-de-sac. This is what they would look like. Um, again, they look, uh, pretty much identical to the condos that are beside of them. And then, uh, just for your information, these are some of the, the, uh, the interior plans, uh, for them. Each one does have a garage and, uh, two stories. Uh, the recommendation, uh, from zoning and zoning commission and professional planning staff is recommend approval of the requested special use permit to build two single-family attached dwellings in an area zone, single-family residential. As I've just presented to you and based on, uh, the information above, the amendment we feel is consistent with applicable plans. Uh, one, the city's UDO, uh, supports multifamily development in R six district as does twenty forty land use plan for this area. The uses surrounding the property are a mix of residential uses, uh, which are, we feel compatible with this proposed zoning. And the proposed, uh, SUP is reasonable in public interest because it does, we feel, fit the overall character of the area. Uh, if you would, please hold any questions you have of staff till after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, do we have speakers?
Yes, sir, just one speaker, Mr. James Tolbert.
Okay, so with that, I'll open up the public hearing. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, I've got eight points again. The special use complies with all applicable standards in section thirty dash four C. Um, this is a residential two-family and will meet all parking requirements and landscaping requirements through the UDO. The special use is compatible with the character of surrounding lands and the uses permitted in the zoning districts of surrounding lands. I was able to get the floor plan from the builder next door, so they are pretty much identical to those properties. And it should blend seamlessly with those. Um, the sig, the special use avoids significant adverse impacts. Um, it's already a cleared lot, so there really shouldn't be much impact. And as far as delivery, parking, all of that should be taken care of with the two-car driveways that I'm putting on each unit. Um, the special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use on adjacent lands. Um, as, as I already stated, they're going to look pretty much exactly like the ones that are next door. So, it should blend in with what's already there. The special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources and other resources. Um, luckily, the, the lots already cleared and slopes from rear to front. So, everything should go towards the, the street and we shouldn't have any problems with any of that. The special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the same one. The special use maintains a safe ingress and egress onto the site and safe road conditions around the site. And that should be taken care of with the driveways and the two-car parking per unit. The special use allows for the protection of property values and ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district. Um, the property values in the neighborhood are between fifty and about a hundred and twenty thousand. So, the multi-use on the street actually is higher than what is, what was already there prior to. And these should be somewhere hundred and sixty per unit, so around three hundred thousand. The special use complies with all of the relevant city, state and federal taxes and rec, federal laws and regulations. And it will comply with all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, before you leave, can you restate your name and address and your relationship?
James Tolbert, twenty-nine eighteen Radstock Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, two-eight-three-oh-six. I'm the owner of the property and the general contractor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
No further speakers, sir.
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it please, the council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special use permit, since the special use permit meets the eight findings of fact, and the special use permit implements the policies adopted in the UDO in the 2040 future land use plan. Development of this use is allowed in the single-family six district, it will not detract from the overall area. The special use permit ensures that new development is compatible with the current zoning, UDO, and overall growth pattern of the area. The attached site plan that was, that is in our CAM is evidence that's provided by the developer and the conditions recommended, and there are no other factors which will substantially affect the public health, safety morals, or general welfare of the city. Thank you.
All right, this is a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, there's a second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for action. Councilmember Banks?
Green.
Councilmember, what else?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item ten point zero two, ten point zero one, abolishment of the Lake Valley Drive MSD, so I take it all things are paid, huh?
No, 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 this is, Mr. Nash is going to take over here, I'm just helping him get set up here. Let's see, let's.
Counsel, y'all need a?
Here we go.
Break. We only got two.
This is the Lake Valley, abolish.
She's young.
There you go.
Oh, to be young.
Mr. Nash, the nicest man in the organization.
I don't know about that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, David Nash from the Development Services Department. This item, you've got three public hearings now, just regular public hearings. This first one is concerning the abolishment, abolition of the Lake Valley Drive MSD. There are two MSDs, municipal service districts currently in the city. One is here in downtown, it's quite large. There's one out near Cross Creek Mall referred to as the Lake Valley Drive District, made up of only three parcels. It's on Lake Valley Drive. It was created in 2011. This map, I apologize, it is from the record from ten years ago, and. See if I can point out a few landmarks to help you get fixed. Is my cursor moving? Can't see it, though.
There you go.
There we go, all right. So Cross Creek Mall is down at the bottom of the map, All-American Freeway is over here, this is Yadkin Road, Sky Bow would be just below the edge. Lake Valley Drive was built in 2004, a new section of it connecting Sky Bow with an existing section that runs north of Yadkin Road. At the time, there was a big proposal to do an Embassy Suites Hotel project and convention center and another hotel, but it was recognized that there were severe drainage problems out there along the road because of the topography and the drainage ways, and it was decided that it was going to be too costly for the project to go ahead without some special monies, and arrangements were made for the city to apparently basically loan money upfront to help get the project started, and that the agreement was that the special tax would be imposed on the three parcels to raise back or collect the money that would be needed to repay that loan. And basically, they're right here and here, although it's really tough to see, I apologize for this quality. Currently out there is the Embassy Suites Hotel, next door is Wiggins Conference Center, and then recently built is a New Spring Hill Suites Motel. So our Budget and Evaluation Division has monitored the collection of money over the years, and they've pointed out that the resolution called for this district to expire in, on June the thirtieth of 2011. State law says that in order to abolish such a district, there must be a public hearing, that's where we are tonight. You have to make a finding that it's no longer needed, and then you have to adopt an ordinance, which would abolish the district. The ordinance is in your packet. So we see several options for you. Following the state law, option one A would be to adopt the ordinance abolishing the district effective June thirtieth, 2021. One B would be to not adopt the ordinance, and so it would stay in effect under that scenario, but then your resolution called for it to expire anyway on June thirtieth of 2021. And so those options two A and B, take that into account, but I believe the state law may override what was in the resolution, so we're looking at favoring and recommending option one A, that you adopt this ordinance, it's in your packet, abolishing the Lake Valley Drive MSD effective June thirtieth. And it would require that finding, and this is your hearing.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
No speakers for this item, sir.
All right, so with that, we'll open and close the public hearing. Councilmember Kinston.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to make a motion for ten dash one, twenty-one, nineteen-twenty-nine, to adopt the ordinance and abolish the Lake Valley Drive MSD effective June thirtieth, 2021.
So it's a motion by Councilmember Kinston, there's a second by Councilmember Hare, I think Ingram. Can't tell who came on first. Hare, okay, all right, so, Counsel, any discussion on the Kinston-Hare motion? All right, look to you for action on that. Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember, what else?
Green.
Councilmember Wright? Councilmember Davis? All right, to a combination of verbal and lights and telephone, unanimous, Madam Clerk? All right, item ten point zero two.
Yes, sir. Can't see real well. Your second public hearing is concerning the annexation of an area referred to as Scott Home Drive, it's located on the northern side of Gates Four. The applicant was, application was submitted by Mr. Laurie Epler of Larry King and Associates, a local engineering company here in Fayetteville. She was submitted this petition on behalf of three LLCs in the area, Pelican Property Holdings, CJR Property Holdings, and K&amp;J's Property LLC. It's asking for annexation of thirty-seven acres along the northern side of Gates Four. It'll be along a new section of Scott Home Drive, and it's near Mr. Davis's district. On this map, you see the outline of the area that's proposed for annexation with a purple dash line here. The Gates Four area down here is down here, this is a golf course area of it. Dundle Road is out here for reference. Scott Home Drive, one of the entrances to Gates Four is right along here, and it currently terminates right here at the edge of this area, being requested for annexation. And I should have pointed out that the red line is the existing city limit line, so through prior annexation petition areas, you do have some part of what's normally thought of as Gates Four now in the city, and this would be one more section, which would connect over here. On the map, the green represents vacant land, yellow, single-family residential, so there's a good bit of single-family all along here, along the edge of this area, and the applicant is proposing sixty-nine lots with sixty-nine more homes, when completely built out. Just looking at the entranceway there at Scott Home, this is a couple of years old, but this gives you an idea of what it looks like. There is the gatehouse there, all of these streets, we're talking about tonight, are private, and will be private in the new, new section. This is looking into the area, it's just completely wooded and undeveloped right now. A nearby view of homes, looking into their, that area, and another view of a nearby development, part of Kings, I'm sorry, Gates Four. This is a site plan turned in by the developer, and you see the layout of the streets and the lot configuration. The map that we've drawn in-house with meets and bounds. So some of the things we always consider are, is the area contiguous? Yes, here. Is the petition signed by the correct owners? Yes. Can our city and operating departments provide services? Yes. And can PWC provide services? Yes. So your options would be to annex the area effective tonight, or wait until June thirtieth, or wait until the following June thirtieth. Those dates are spelled out in state law. Do not adopt the ordinance or table action, and staff recommends that you do adopt an ordinance annexing this area effective tonight, and it would pick up on the initial zoning case that was in your agenda packet as a consent item earlier. It would all be zoned as SF ten in the city. This is all based on the petition being sufficient, and it meets the standards for contiguous area, and the city and PWC departments can provide service, and the budget impact should be positive. There is a chart in your Appendix A, I think it's called, services and revenues, that shows you the possible revenue outlay on this area once it gets developed. It is quite favorable. That concludes the presentation right here.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
May we have no speakers?
All right, with that, we'll open and close the public hearing. Councilman Davis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we, I would like to make a motion that we move to adopt the proposed ordinance, annexing the area effective April twenty-six, twenty, 2021, and establish initial zoning consistent with the prior action on the zoning case.
All right, this is a motion by Councilmember Davis. There's a second, second by Councilman Dawkins. Do me off with the red, sir. He's just pushing buttons. All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for action on this. Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin?
Green.
What'd she say? Green. All right, Councilmember, what else?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries, unanimous. All right, item ten point zero three, amendment to Fayetteville Hope Mills Annexation Agreement, Mr. Nash. I'm trying, brother. If wine vald is there, we hurry up.
So many ways to run these things. One more item, if you can bear with me.
Public hearing, I got you.
This one's a little unusual. This is actually involving an agreement that was adopted in 2014 with the town of Hope Mills and the city of Fayetteville regarding where each town should plan to annex in the future. It's all based on a city, the city receiving a request to annex property near Aaron Lakes West, west of Bingham Drive. That property is contiguous to the city, but as I'll show you in a minute in the map, but the 2014 agreement said that this should be annexed by Hope Mills. We made you aware of this on March first. Dr. Newton has met with the Hope Mills staff and talked to them about it, and we do recommend an amendment to your annexation agreement, so that we can act upon that area that was submitted to you. So here is the area that was requested for annexation. It's, so. It's shown here in the dash red line, the current city limits are running like this, the solid red line, and the area in the city is shaded in yellow. The blue area represents an area that that agreement calls for to be annexed by Hope Mills. Hope Mills is shown here in the purple pattern, and there is one satellite area of Hope Mills very close to this property, but not very accessible to it at all. This is Fisher Road and Bingham Drive. So we'll talk a minute about the area request for annexation, a little bit more about it, and the reasons that we think it ought to be annexed into Fayetteville, not Hope Mills, and we'll go into the actual agreement. It will be called the Commons at Aaron Lakes West, if developed. There are going to be thirty-eight lots, but twenty-two of them are already in an area that's in the city. Sixteen of the proposed lots would not be, about nine, almost ten acres, part of one parcel. Mr. Armstrong is the owner. Here's the map they turned in. So here's three more maps that show you why we think it ought to be annexed into Fayetteville. The yellow line here is the current city limits. What they're proposing develop is all up in here, north of that line. The other lots are down here, it'll be served by this cul-de-sac with no connection going south towards Fisher Road. In order to get to these lots down here, if Hope Mills were allowed to annex the area, they would have to come all the way out Fisher Road, Bingham Drive, into the Aaron Lakes neighborhood, and then down this street to finally get to these lots. That just seems so inefficient. Flooding is another issue. Again, the area that's requested is here in the red line. Flood zones are shown here in red and blue, and this area is very wet. It makes it very difficult to ever build a road from Fisher Road up to serve this area. And existing land use pattern in the area is shown here, green being vacant again, and this bright green is a cemetery, so there's cemetery property right here that blocks any possible road from coming in here from Bingham Drive. Three houses here, a church. Here's that area that's currently in Hope Mills, but it's still vacant, never developed after being annexed many years ago by Hope Mills. So for the access problem, the flooding, and the existing land use that kind of precludes any possibility of a road, we think that this area ought to be developed and then annexed into Fayetteville. Now skipping a minute to the annexation agreement, there've been at least three versions, it seems, from the records. We're now talking about the 2014 agreement. Here's a map that was in that agreement. There were many separate maps that went all around the edge of the area. The red line is the annexation agreement line. The current map that's in the 2014 agreement is labeled as A seven, and here, it's not showing real well, but this color is supposed to be for annexation by Hope Mills. Section nine of the agreement says that it is possible to modify the agreement, and you all directed us back in March to meet with Hope Mills about this. That has been done, they understand the need for modification, and our staff has pointed out to them that a couple of times in the past, they had asked for some sort of special request to modify the agreement, and the city of Fayetteville gladly went along with that. Here would be the change to the line focused in on map A seven. Here would be the change to the line focused in on map A seven, and the red dash line shows the approximate boundaries of what is being requested to be annexed. It would simply be a change so that it would allow the city to annex this less than ten-acre The budget impact should be positive if this goes through. So several options, option one is to approve this proposed ordinance and agreement as shown on map A seven, and that's the one that staff recommends.
Thanks, sir. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
No, sir.
All right, open and close the public hearing. Councilman Davis?
Yes, Sir Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and recommend the city, um, and, uh, motion's right here. I'd like to make a motion that we, um, annex based on the agreement, on the report that...
All right, this is a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action. You've been seconding all night. Quick draw McGraw. All right, uh, uh, Councilmember Banks McGlofer?
Green.
Councilmember, what else?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. All right, council, motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I should have added in what I said that it's expected, it's expected Hope Mills will adopt the same agreement ordinance on May third.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.